Okay, thank you all for being here tonight for a regular council meeting of May 11th, 2017. Good to see Mr. Manning with us tonight. He may come up to one of the microphones here in front and lead us in our invocation and pledge to the flag. Everyone would please stand.
First off, may I say one thing? Appreciate all of you praying for me while I was in the hospital. And one of the nurses said, "Well, it's your 17th round of serving." I said, "I ain't dead yet, and we ain't got the best of you." And one of them asked me, said, "Can I ask you a question?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Well, were you going to be here or with Lord?" I thought, "That's not a very good question." I thought, "I gotta be with the Lord." But yeah, I love the Holy City. Yeah, that's great. Our heavenly Father, if we come to you tonight, Lord, we thank you, Lord, for our saving, our counseling, and everybody has part. And, Lord, we ask you, Lord, to not touch all those sick and afflicted, Lord. Watch over them, Lord. Put your arms around them. And, Lord, we ask you, go young Lord, with the death angel, raise them, and watch over them. And give each council member, mayor, and all the rest of them a pure Lord guidance as to what to do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here. Here. I mentioned this in the agenda session. I'll mention it again here. Councilmember Hilton is uptown, spending time with her son at his graduation. So we will keep her in our thoughts and prayers as she travels, and we'll have her back with us next time. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. The items there be the minutes for the April 27th Agenda Work Session, as well as the minutes for the April 27th Regular Council Meeting. Motion approved. We have a motion to approve at the second. We have the roll call, please.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes.
At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident of the city of East Ridge or a business owner here in the city, you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you will come to one of the two microphones at the front of the room here, state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes. I see two people have signed in, and that was Laura Mathis, 2100, and Brian Root.
I just, I had asked the city manager to send me some information regarding the housing authority and how it's set up and so forth. And I was reading in one of the sections, and it says it has to have its own council. Or would, so would we have to hire another attorney for the housing authority, or would Mr. List Richmond service council for the housing authority?
I will defer to Mr. Richmond.
That is a council decision, but I'm certainly able to defend that that was one of these selected.
And that would be extra billing?
Under our contract it would be.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, the next person would be Robert Parks, 1608, John Ross Road.
Hello. I own the property at John Ross Road where the supposed ATV track is. You haven't heard my side of the story. All you've heard is some disgruntled neighbors. When the council spends this much time, major time on a minor issue, you're getting below-average results. Me and my grandsons ride two ATVs on that property. We don't ride every day. We don't ride every weekend. I bought the property last August. I spent over $6,000 in clearing that property. The portable toilet was for mainly the bulldozer people and people working up there to clear the property. The portable toilet's been removed. I did have a building permit. Me and my daughter were going to build houses up there. We changed our plans. The temporary power pole has been removed. There was a pop-up camper that we had up there just to get out of the heat from when we were clearing the property. It has been removed and sold. We do not ride on that property every day. And here it states, "We're on there the majority of the day." That is an outright lie. I'm sure she's so concerned about it, she would have the dates of the day we rode up there and the times we've rode, which are very few. And it's me and my two grandsons, a seven-year-old and a 12-year-old. We don't rent nothing out. I own the land. You know, the ATV is a four-stroke ATV. A chainsaw makes more noise than the ATV. A lawnmower makes more noise than the ATV. Granted, at the end of last year, it was dusty because of the drought. We rode up there a couple of days, and the dust was horrible. It got so bad, we couldn't ride. This year, we've rode a few days since the first of the year. We probably hadn't been up there five times total riding. We rode this last weekend on a Saturday, maybe for a couple of hours. And me and my grandson rode, I think, Tuesday afternoon for maybe 40 minutes. The houses around us, some of the neighbors are good, other ones complain. You know, I've spent a lot of money on this property and a lot of improvements just to get all this stuff cleared off of it. I have some pictures here. There's over 250 trees on that property. And to weed eat this property, it takes hours. And I'm out there for hours weed eating. And for me, you know, well, you can't have a commode up here, you know? So I have to go home, you know, to my house. I only live about 30 seconds from there. I live on Laredo Avenue, which is about three blocks from John Ross Road. I own the John Ross Road property. I own property on Laredo Avenue. As a matter of fact, the boys that ride up there, their grandfather, great-grandfather was the mayor of this town, Gerald White, G.W. White, back in the 80s. My family has built more houses in this neighborhood on Lee Sutton Gale Drive off of South Seminole back in the late 60s and produced more money for this tax base than these neighbors ever thought about doing. My dad was a builder. My uncles were builders. I built two houses on South Rugby just last year and sold them. I've got a project going in Cleveland, St. Elmo. So I'm not up there every day to ride. And, you know, they make it now like I'm renting out ATVs, riding them, and that's just not the fact. I mean, you're trying to write legislation here or whatever, and you haven't heard all the facts. I mean, how can you sit there, the attorney, and start drafting stuff when you don't even know the facts? How do you do that?
I've drafted.
Well, it says, you know, that I ride the majority of the day. It's like I'll ride a lot. You know, I've got a witness here, and my girlfriend used to work for State Farm, I imagine, up here for, you know, years. And, you know, she rides a little bit. I ride in a seven and a 12-year-old, and sometimes her grandson. That's who rides up there. I own the property. Like I say, my chainsaw makes more noise. I've got 250 trees. Do they want me to start cutting 250 trees down? Choice is theirs. I mean, I'll stop riding and start cutting.
I believe you reached your five minutes. Thank you very much for coming forward to address the council tonight. Appreciate that. We will. We do have it on the agenda to talk about things that potentially we could do. Now, like I said, sometimes we get into 20 or 30-minute discussions on things that seem relatively minor or minute. But when six, eight, 12 residents come forward and say, "We think you've got a problem," it does make us stop and say, "Okay, well, what's going on?" So, again, sometimes we have discussions about things that, you know, an onlooker would say, "Well, it's kind of wasting time there." But if it's a concern to a group of our citizens, it's got to be a concern to us as well. Do we have anyone else? Yes, sir.
Maggie Wopper, 1006, Iron Lane. I've got a few things I want to say, but I've been aware for a while, and then, of course, I read on the East Ridge News Online today about how the city had posted names, social security numbers, did worse, places worse for executives for Circle K. And I've seen it in the past when I looked up something for the rear board about Mapco. And I just thought, "Well, it shouldn't be in the packet. It shouldn't be online." But, you know, I didn't do anything with it. But since the information's come to light, and it is, was up until yesterday, the link was active, we pulled the document, and it was online due to the city's negligence. You know, it's information shouldn't have ever been there. We put it there. It was a willful act on our part. I think-
I don't think I can characterize it as a willful act. Yes, we, somebody aired them doing that, and they came and reported that to me right away, and I said, "Take it off."
I understand.
When you say willful act, I take exception to that.
We purposely put that document online. And inside that document, something we weren't aware of, true, but we purposely put it online. That's all I'm saying. So I think that the city should consider reaching out to those six individuals and offering them a year of credit monitoring, because, you know, if that's the least Target can do when they're hacked, it's probably the least we can do when we put these people's names, addresses, date of birth, social security numbers, place of verse on the Internet for the World Wide Web to see. Anyone could have gotten hold of it. Most likely, they didn't. But it would be a nominal fee if they chose to take us up on the offer. It'd be a good gesture of goodwill, but I think we should consider. Just floating that out. Also, about the website. The new website looks a little better, and I really like the fact that it works right on my phone. But it concerns me that we're using the same company that obviously has pretty poor web maintenance practices. I mean, our server crashed, and from what I was told, from my contact with the city, that it was unfixable, unretrievable, and the last backup was from four months ago. You know, like, most website providers provide you with daily backups and off-premises backups or off-server backups so you can restore yourself pretty easily. You know, the website I built for East Ridge News Online, it costs all $20 a month to maintain, is backed up twice a day off-premises. I mean, that's, you're talking about beer-boned stuff here. And I just don't know that we should do business with somebody who doesn't know how to do business. I mean, I just, that's just, I mean, I understand things happen, but when your business is running websites, you should know how to keep them up, and you should know how to back them up. Because we're spending people's time and manpower and expense, money, to put all this information online, to front-load the data into the website, to make it so that it's useful for the citizens and has all the things it needs. It should be backed up properly. It should be backed up daily. It should be backed up off-premises so that if something happens, we don't have to pay for all those man-hours twice. That's just common sense. And, you know, no business owner on a commercial website would be okay with that. You know, Amazon might be all right with their website just being, "Oh, we got stuff from four months ago." I'm not saying that we're Amazon, but I'm saying it's just a small piece of a puzzle there that I think we should really look at and consider. And I know that's more of a day-to-day thing than a city council thing, but I just, I wanted to say something about it. And also, one final thing from the agenda session. Springfield Park floods a lot, and it probably has to be raised up a lot in order to, I mean, I find it comical that we talk about dog owners not liking mud in a place that's nothing but mud because it floods so much. So I know from the Camp Jordan biasco with the last park grant that sometimes these things are, like, locked into a location or whatever, like, you can't move them too easily. So I don't know about applying for a grant at a place that floods, because if we get too far deep into it and we find out, "Oh, man, it's going to cost us an arm and a leg to raise this thing up," will we have the ability to move it? I mean, it's probably a manic question, but will we have the ability to move it to a new location? I just think it's something the council should consider, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know that Springfield Park, it is, it is in a flood-prone area. You could say the same about, in Jordan Park, it's in a flood-prone area. You could say the same about McBrian back here, as the school itself has actually flooded due to a flash flood once. So there, if you're looking for a place that is ideal and never floods, in terms of city property, it's going to be kind of hard to find one. And that's generally why some of the recreational types of things are on flood-prone areas, because it doesn't really have much commercial value. You can have a ball field somewhere. If it floods, okay, you clean it up, but away you go. So, and I don't think, in the case of a dog park here at Springfield, I don't think we would have to raise it up in order to construct that. It's basically a fence and a few, what are they called? Obstacles, I guess, out there for the dogs to run up and all the rest. So although it is, as you mentioned, it is a flood-prone area, I think, I think it still makes, it makes some sense to have something there. Do we have another? Anyone else?
I know that way of being on Springfield.
Yes, sir.
I know when the city went in and bought all those houses, all we have that one house, and that outrageous house, we've all went to the other house. Right over here, right beside the creek, the gentleman be of government, Mr. Gass. That was the last park of that section, the water river coming to the front yard, because it is so much higher than the west of the other side of the tree and the other side. And that's why it's about if we had a circle-sized minimum, that we had to spend this $29,000 to build a dock. So I'd like to see us go out there, risk some elevations, find the highest point out there. Up our next to that last house on the right-hand side, but I don't think it flooded all of that house. Might have got in the yard, we bought the house, it's part of the yard. But I still think it's possible, and it wouldn't take much if we had a good little bit of it, since the floodways and the flood things have now been changed. It may, part of it may not be there anymore.
That's true, but definitely, I think, doing the site work, site prep, getting elevations, that sort of thing is, those are things that would be done before any kind of construction took place. So, yeah, definitely, we'll find the, if we look forward at that location, we'd certainly find the best location on that parcel. Very good, very good comment. All right, we'll move to communication from council members. Chief Williams, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I have a couple things. First of all, Flotter, would you hear her family, their thoughts and prayers? She passed away over this week. Her funeral was tonight. Would you keep the wedding and the rest of the family, and your thoughts and prayers? Secondly, since elected, I've been attending some of the court proceedings on Tuesdays, and I have a little concern with observing a lot of the citations and tickets and things being dismissed and, in a way, not received through with the files and things. So I'd like to have a look into that and see if there's reasons and what's going on there. If you would, I-
Not at all. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stoll. I'd just like to remind you both, in this last meeting, we had Mr. Rich at East Ridge Middle School, who has had a planned date Saturday, late one, and they're just asking for volunteers to bring the brakes, bike pushes, and stuff. If you'd like to help, big lady would, or go provide for us. Just want to make that reminder. And also, I think the city is also working on late, a truck of, yeah, prying, like, a truck of bolts up there.
Correct. We're set.
Have you said that's at the middle school?
Yes, sir.
Is there a certain place that we think just in front of there?
Probably have, right for some capture here.
Question.
Yes, sir. I was saying, number front, I was just, one of the neighbors of a murder came down, wanted me to thank the public department for the work on the rural traffic, and they appreciate the radar signs, be them signed, being a bear.
Very good. All right. I don't have anything at this time. Ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go to old business. Item A, ordinance number 1034, it's before us on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as free zone property located at 5301 South Germantown Road, tax map number 157H, DHD, dash, zero, two, seven, R1 Residential District, O1 Office District.
Motion approved. I have a motion to approve. Then the second. Any comments or questions? If we can have the roll call, please.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes.
That item is approved. Item B, ordinance number 1035, we get before us on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to allow construction of a billboard on the tract of land located at 6726 Ringgold Road in accordance with ordinance number 1028, Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 110,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四, 令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四,令四, 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 令四,令四,令四, let's just look forward at that location, we'd certainly find the best location on that parcel. Very good, very good comment.
All right, we'll move to communication from council members. Chief Williams, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I have a couple things. First of all, Flotter, would you hear her family, their thoughts and prayers? She passed away over this week. Her funeral was tonight. Would you keep the wedding and the rest of the family, and your thoughts and prayers? Secondly, since elected, I've been attending some of the court proceedings on Tuesdays, and I have a little concern with observing a lot of the citations and tickets and things being dismissed and, in a way, not received through with the files and things. So I'd like to have a look into that and see if there's reasons and what's going on there. If you would, I-
Not at all. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stoll. I'd just like to remind you both, in this last meeting, we had Mr. Rich at East Ridge Middle School, who has had a planned date Saturday, late one, and they're just asking for volunteers to bring the brakes, bike pushes, and stuff. If you'd like to help, big lady would, or go provide for us. Just want to make that reminder. And also, I think the city is also working on late, a truck of, yeah, prying, like, a truck of bolts up there.
Correct. We're set.
Have you said that's at the middle school?
Yes, sir.
Is there a certain place that we think just in front of there?
Probably have, right for some capture here.
Question.
Yes, sir. I was saying, number front, I was just, one of the neighbors of a murder came down, wanted me to thank the public department for the work on the rural traffic, and they appreciate the radar signs, be them signed, being a bear.
Very good. All right. I don't have anything at this time. Ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go to old business. Item A, ordinance number 1034, it's before us on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as free zone property located at 5301 South Germantown Road, tax map number 157H, DHD, dash, zero, two, seven, R1 Residential District, O1 Office District.
Motion approved. I have a motion to approve. Then the second. Any comments or questions?
I voted last time I voted on this ordinance, actually, B and C, 1035, 1036. I voted against that. I feel like we have too many signs in East Ridge, but I got flanked about it. Whiz, council, make this ordinance to our certain footage. So I get choked up on. So I feel like we need to, I mean, I feel like personally myself, I need to change my vote on that, you know, before it's, I mean, that I did love to, for that footage. So I feel like it should have opted to, if we want to change it, we need to change the signs. If we don't want any more signs, we need to make it even. No signs at all, or make it closer, or whatever.
And I, you know, I can certainly appreciate that, and my hope is that council will rework this ordinance just a little bit to be a little clearer. This, this particular use-on-review request is actually inside the boundary that's required for distance from a park, school, church, hospital, cemetery, historic district for government buildings. The fire station number two will be inside the 750 feet required. But again, my hope is that we can go back and tweak the wording further, because I do think we left it, still attempts too broad, but that's my view of it.
My opinion is that we passed all these rules and the new sign ordinance, that this was brought up by our attention about 523 feet. And also, this sign that's off Ringgold Road in behind the business, and it's really outside from the fire station. So to that said, I still make a motion to approve it.
There's a motion and a second, I'll go for it.
Yes, and my comment is, the owner of that property had bought that late before the[723.13]
That was the last part of that section. The water ever coming to the front yard, because it is so much higher than the rest of the other side of the street. And the other side, naturally wise about if we had a certain size minimum that we had to spend this 29,000 to build it off of. So I'd like to see us go out there and raise some elevations. About the highest point down there. Up our next to that last house on the right hand side, what I don't think is clear about that house. If I've got in the yard, we bought my house, it's part of the yard. But I still think it's possible that it wouldn't take much if we had a good look in there. Since the floodways and the flood things and the map have been changed, it may, part of it may not be there anymore.
That's true, but definitely, I think doing the site work, site prep, getting elevations, that sort of thing is, those are things that would be done before any kind of construction took place. So, so yeah, definitely we'll find the, if we look forward at that location, we'd certainly find the best location on that parcel. Very good, very good comment. All right, we'll move to communication from council members. Chief Williams, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First of all, platform would keep Eric Harris's family in their thoughts and prayers. She passed away over this week. Her funeral was today. We should keep Quentin and the rest of the family in your thoughts and prayers. Secondly, since elected, I'm going to attend some of the court proceedings on Tuesdays. And I have a little concern with observing a lot of the citations and tickets and things being dismissed and not received through with the files and things. So I'd like to see if we can look into that and see if there's reasons and what's going on there. If you would.
Not at all. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sill. I'd just like to remind you both, in the last, this last meeting, we had Mr. Rich at East Ridge Middle School. This happened a clean up day, Saturday, late one, and they're just asking for volunteers to bring the brakes, bike rush and stuff. If you'd like them to help, big lady would have gone for my friends. Just want you to make that reminder. And also, I think the city is also working on late, a truck of, 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 of bolts up there.
Correct, we're set.
Have you said that's at the middle school?
Yes, yes.
Is there a certain place that we think just in front of there?
Probably have a wrench or something.
Yes, sir. I was saying number four, George, and that one of the neighbors of Murdaugh came down. Wanted me to thank the Public Department for the work on the curb traffic. And they appreciate the radar signs, be them sign being up there.
Very good. I don't have, have anything at this time. Ask the city manager if he has any comments.
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go to old business. Item A, ordinance number 1034, it's before us on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as free zone property located at 5301 South Germantown Road. Tax map number 157H, D E D zero two seven, R1 Residential District to O1 Office District.
Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. And a second, any comments or questions? If we can have the roll call, please.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item B, ordinance number 1035, we get before us on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to allow construction of a billboard on the tract of land located at 6726 Ringgold Road in accordance with ordinance number 1028, Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 110. Ordinance 481, Article 4, Section 105.
Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance 1035?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve. And a second, any comments or questions?
I voted last time I voted on this ordinance, actually B and C, 1035, 1036. I voted against that, because I feel like we have too many signs in East Ridge. But I got flanked about it. Whiz Bounce will make this ordinance to our certain footage. So I get choked up on. So I feel like we need to, I mean, I feel like personally myself, I need to change my vote on that. It'll probably tell me that I did love to, for that footage. So I feel like it should have opted until if we want to change it, we need to change the signs. If we don't want any more signs, we need to make it even. No signs at all, or make it closer, whatever.
Okay, now. You know, I can certainly appreciate that. And my, my hope is that council will rework this ordinance just a little bit, to be a little clearer. This, this particular use on review request is actually inside the boundary that's required for distance from a park, school, church, hospital, cemetery, historic district for government buildings. The far station number two will be inside the 750 feet required. But again, my, my hope is that, that we can go back and tweak the wording further. Because I do think we left it, still it tends too broad. But that's my view of it.
My opinion is that we passed all these rules and new sign ordinance. This, this was brought up by our attention about 523 feet. And also, this sign is awfully old, in behind the business. Really outside from the fire station. To that say, I still make a motion to approve it.
There's, there's a motion and a second, Paul, the poll.
Yes, and my comment is the owner of that property had bought that before the fire station too, that actually had purchased and constructed. So, or at least it's starting construction, so that's what I'm saying.
All right. We get the roll call.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
No.
Item is approved on second and final reading. Item C, ordinance 1036, on second and final reading.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to allow construction of a digital billboard of a tract of land located at 5705 Ringgold Road in accordance with ordinance number 1028, Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 110. An ordinance 481, Article 4, Section 105.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
No.
Item is approved, on second and final reading. Item D, ordinance number 1037.
An ordinance, the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to allow construction of an off-premise monument sign on a tract of land located at 6642 Ringgold Road in accordance with ordinance number 1028, Title 14, Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 110. An ordinance 481, Article 4, Section 105.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, without prints, monument type sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask the city if the owner down there found a suitable location for this thing.
Yes, they did. They're, they're actually working with T-Don on the right of way to see exactly where they can put it. But it's staked off. And then you also have a rendition of what the signs are going to apply. Should be in your bag.
Thank you, sir. We get the roll call, please.
House Mayor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Laverne.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item E, discuss and/or take action on PTVs in residential zone areas.
Supplement to the meeting two weeks ago, what I did is I did a review of any sort of applicable state statutes to apply to all frame vehicles, including two-wheel motorbikes, off-road motorbikes, three-wheel, four-wheel ATV, dune buggy, go-karts, snowmobiles, all of that, as I was conducting the research. As, with regard to the state statutes, it does not appear that the state legislature has in any way preempted municipals, municipalities from regulating the use of off-road vehicles in connection with property. The state has certainly imposed laws that relates to public roads and ATV vehicles are able, they're only allowed to cross at 90 degrees. Otherwise, they're not permitted on the road. And there's no requirement for registration of an ATV. All that's required of an ATV is that it be a certificate of title and that there be components reflecting manufacturing parts, such as a VIN number or something. So you've got at least the authority through the fact that it's not been preempted by state law. When I did a search of Tennessee law and ordinances in general, there's, there are various ways if you want to regulate the use of an ATV in residential zone properties, you've got the options, you can, some of the options that you've got are, you regulate it through the noise. You can keep it at a certain decibel. I found some levels that were topping out at about 99 decimals. How much? 99. That was just one example. I'm not suggesting that's it. I'm just telling you examples of what I located. You found some that had some language to deal with, that the dust gets to a point that it becomes unreasonable to the neighbors. And while that may be a concern, I think we would want to address that and make sure that it is measurable. When I, the research I found is we want to, if there's, if there's going to be some action done by the council, you want to make sure it's done in a manner that can be measured to a degree of determining what the violation would be. So if it's a noise ordinance, you have a tangible number you can reach. And if it's anything above that, then that's, if it's going to be the dust, there may need to be some, maybe a pollution issue that we look at if it's a level. You can regulate the timeframe if you want to do, say, a nine to seven on weekdays, or 10 to five, 10 to seven on weekends. You know, keep the weeknights clean from, from any interference and the noise of the ATVs. I found one that was prohibited use of ATVs in residential or its own properties. You've got, these are all just examples of fraud tape that you've got some latitude for what you all want to operate within to regulate the use of ATVs in the city. And to the extent that something is framed, my recommendation would be it have something that can be measured so that anyone that's going out to enforce these violations has got something they can grasp onto with, rather than it be a subjective arbitrary review and determination of whether or not there's any violation. So you've got, I found one that even had a, a limit on the number of non, or unrelated riders on a particular property. I don't know how you enforce that, that's a little difficult. But that was one example I found. You've got, so the, now one that can be done is you regulate the engine size. If it's going to be a particular CC on the engine displacement, tire size. And you've got certain mufflers that you could require on a particular ATV. These are all just examples of ways of making it unofficial to reduce the noise. And then also the time of use with regard to when they want to get out of the property.
You're saying that we can regulate the mufflers even though they come factory equipped, though we have a muffler?
Well, I think generally the opposite terms of no modifications post factory. So in other words, a removal of a muffler.
Obviously, a pretty wide range of possibilities.
It's kind of like dog park, it's just, get a plane to weather, and a dog park, it's a, had to enforce it. Dog park. So if we get a plane faster riding ATVs, we get there, they done loaded up and gone, so.
You don't have it.
So you don't have it.
That person, my fault, I don't think they should be ready to residential area. You know, run other, other homes.
You bring up a good point, Council. But one point, example I found was lot size. It didn't meet a certain, say, five acre tract, and anything less than five acres, you didn't allow. So that was one example I found.
You guys all, we all live in East Ridge. Do you want somebody, I'm not, I mean, I said, I don't know. All we hear say is what Mr. Ford had mentioned, you know, about the riding. So I don't know really, you know, how, how much you've been riding. I don't, we had any complaints that they went up to check and on. I lived in, when I lived in South Carolina, I had, I had kind of had the same situation. And they were, they were actually driving a car in the backyard, you know, a lot, making a lot of mess, a lot of noise. And, you know, you couldn't do with your own backyard because, because of something like that. I just don't feel like they, something like that going on in the residential area. I mean, I don't think any one of us would that next door to us. I mean, I would hardly, and I would be fried in the morning because I thought it was like the back. You know, I would, I would leave that in the morning. Don't do that.
Well, the last thing I want to do is prevent a child casually, occasionally riding, I mean, by coinvitedly for a short period of time on the property, but for long extended purposes in a residential area. And the event that it is going into the late evening and night with either temporary power or a generator, I feel that's a little excessive. And can it also, I know there's noise warnings, hearing something over a certain distance with that. I don't know if that's disgusting. If that was going to play loud, loud noise being generated from a vehicle over a certain distance, is that also measurable?
Okay. Presumably, one of the examples I found was one on unimproved properties versus improved properties. It was a lot, it was vacant. There was one I found ordinance that dealt with unimproved property versus how it was going to be handled if there were homes within a certain distance of a property line.
Well, let me ask this, if we try to control this ATV here, then what? Here, the highest we have got complaints about, Boyd Speedway, have that over here down there. We have all the ATV things, so. Anything to make down how, put both, both of these together for me to crawl over?
One problem, it's in.
I know it's in Georgia, but.
We've been up this tree two, three times on that. I mean, this county here pretend that we're doing it back.
You don't have jurisdiction in another state.
I think the track itself is in Georgia. A portion of the track, a portion of the bit, that's correct, but the track itself. Georgia.
Well, I think, again, there's a wide array of options here. Mr. Williams stated, I don't want to stop someone because I, when I was a kid, my mom entered a contest and won us a, a four-wheeler. In a contest, in a quad. And so as a kid, I rode the backyard a little bit. And it was here in East Ridge. So, and I, I don't want to keep, to keep a, a child from casually riding in the backyard. I think the issue is, where is the, where's the dividing line between a casual ride and repeated, really irritating circumstances being produced by, by someone riding? That's where we have to find that, that balance. For, for me, unless someone is ready to make a hard and fast recommendation, it's going to require some additional time for me.
We're not taking action tonight, and then in the next six months, the register have the Public Department keep up the number of complaints we get?
We certainly can, and it's phrased in a way on the agenda that we can take action, we can do something. What exactly that is?
But if we just didn't let it one time, give others wait, then what actions to do, we really need to take. Like you say, it's just giving three kids up there. His girlfriend, so they were going to go one time, and made a plasma hunt. Neighbors wanted to complain about that, then they'll call in, and we keep the record. And then Mr. Ray gives a summary of what the situation is, for every act for there, and every thing for there. I think, what is it, three or four acres up there?
Two.
Two acres, I think, and then two acres from John Ross Road. And I'll be able to say what I can do on it.
I've got a picture.
I mean, I don't like that little noise either, the dust either, because I've got friends that have come down here complaining about it. And then I, I didn't hear his side. I mean, they were actually kind of, they were, they were nuts.
And, and, you know, I think, I think there's certainly some wisdom in having, having a, a record kept, a log kept of complaints and times and, you know, that's not to preclude council for doing something if we want to try to formulate something. But in the meantime, I think certainly if we could, could keep a record every time, every time the police get called in regard to, to this, this property and this particular situation, if we can keep a tally, keep, keep a record of how frequently it's happening. Again, just in the meantime, while potentially council looks at, at doing something, at, at actually formulating some type of ordinance that would address what we're talking about.
How many people's up there at one time riding? I mean, you got.
Us four, two grandkids and us. We also have two ATVs, so.
Oh, that's a good one, got two.
Right, but we, we're just kids out.
When I was clearing out the property and I would start a fire with a burning permit, the police and fire department showed up every time. I would call the fire department, tell them I was burning. The neighbors would immediately send the fire department up there. Every time I had opened burning permit and never got a sign because I was always in compliance with the burning permit. The fire was out at the designated time and it was started at the designated.
Well, I can say the problem is that every time y'all gonna ride up there, we're gonna get the flame.
I guarantee it.
I mean, that's gonna be off, so.
Yes, sir.
The, the concern primarily arose the last Labor Day, when, as she admitted, they generated great quantities of dust and they couldn't ride. If they jumped in consideration at that point and realized what they were doing to their neighbors, we probably wouldn't be here today. At this point, there's nothing to prevent them from, it wasn't all day, it was all afternoon, I think that day. But still, it generated so much dust that those of us that were around them were unable to use our property properly. And there's nothing, at this point, even though it has been, how it has been, it has been less often this spring. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that again if we get a dry some. It generated the same dust and bubbles.
The drought was horrible and the, and the dust was bad.
We even put a ride.
We, we had the cost of it. Then it was their property, the kids were inside, didn't have a place to ride. Maybe we did abuse it the first two weekends.
But that has been alleviated by the rain following back.
You don't have to that.
I mean, I would be happy with the council saying, you know, Mr. Parks, you can ride X number of hours per week. Providing the dust, does disturb the neighbors?
Yes, sir.
With his recommendation, that's something that was being discussed here in the back. That could fall somewhat under the same regulations that she said for building excavation that we adjusted back some time, but like certain hours.
Hours.
Hours and holidays. Excludes some of that, just a thought that's.
The noise would fall under the, could fall under the hours anyway. But there, their concern, their residents are not denied hours from seven at night till, let me get this right, 11:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning. They're not gonna ride, nobody's gonna ride in TD's, so those hours.
There's no headlights.
Right. It gives seven to six.
Okay, seven, in, in the.
Seven to six, on weekdays, nine to six on weekends, no Sundays, except for emergencies, and excludes holidays.
That's right.
And then, and then we can address blowing earth in a completely different section. That's, I don't know, air pollution.
I, I would like to, I think maybe it's worth exploring that, that possibility.
I think just looking at that, and I mentioned at the last meeting that.
I think just looking at that, and I mentioned at the last meeting that we didn't have pinpointed language in here which would actually define riding of ATVs and motorized two-wheelers because the hours of operation is in regard to building operations, direction, excavation, demolition, exterior, interior, building, doesn't say anything condition in there that says ATV's hand. Motorized equipment, so this would have to be amended, very easily be amended.
Absolutely.
To include that in.
But would you want, would you want to put ATV rider with the noise, flowing?
That's all, it's all part of the noise ordinance in general. That's just a section of the noise ordinance, so the anti-noise pollution. And that could be a guideline to start with and then you could reevaluate over a period of time.
Well, I think, I think the hours need to be looked at. I mean, certainly if a person wants to ride, you know, if we're looking to put an ordinance, you gotta remember that ordinance isn't just for Mr. Parks's two acres, it's for the whole city. So, some people may want to go out and ride on holiday, or they may want to ride on Sunday. Under this, using the same language here, you wouldn't be able to ride on Sunday.
But you could also, if you, if you, pop up all the city and you can have acres or two too.
That's true. That's real. Okay, here's, here's the concern I, I would have, the problem is I've been, believe me, this is not the first time I've had this subject come up over the past years. What happens if you're, you know, where my property is, I've got an acre, I got a house on it, and my grandson comes over, wants to visit, he wants to ride to his ATV on my yard. I got, I got an acre, I got plenty of enough space for it to be. Now, because I don't meet that two acres or three acres or whatever, he can't ride. Now I can't use my property on something. I think, you know, you're, you're on a slippery slope there, I believe.
And don't say that we couldn't ride on Sunday between the hours of way out, but you can.
Uh, let's see, shall it only be permitted between the hours of seven AM and six PM on weekends and Saturdays, or between the hours of nine and six on Sundays? You're right, you're right.
Yeah, on Sunday, okay. And that's in case of something urgent, like if it was a deadline they were trying to meet. And that was what brought all the noise up to begin with was during development and land starts.
Right.
And that's, that's how, why we had to formulate that because it was affecting people on holiday weekends with people doing field, working in dirt. We were trying to speed up development, but also trying to meet the needs of the neighbors.
Right, well, I think, I think that's a good direction to move in. Maybe we can have, have something formulated for next time to, to just consider in regard to...
On the noise, or on the, on some of the hours, right now.
Right. And, yeah, you look like you have voice, not like you're...
Very, I was gonna, gotta pose some of the same things, but getting into it a lot in more detail. And I appreciate you making suggestions, limiting the number of hours, that maybe that's something also, you know, you've got from and through, maybe limit to...
Certain per hour.
Three hours or four hours or something.
Right. Right? No, I think that's... Basically, what, you know, what we talked about earlier is, I can't remember what issue it was we were talking about. Maybe this one's, this is communication, actually, but where you try to, you try to strike a balance. If you, if you can, arrive at something that everyone can live with. Compromise has become a dirty word in, in our society, but it's, it's a, it's a good word in my book. If everyone can walk away thinking, it's got most of what I want, that's a pretty deal. If, if we could just draft something that would, would take some of these factors into account, and, and it's something that council can consider next time.
I thought you said that on the highway, they ride, four that ride, you don't feel the ride, you get that time which reaches to another time, if anybody gets that time.
That'd be something, that'd be something that we can, we can work out in the order of it. Of this.
I understand that, but I, I don't want, I can't help it. No, I'm okay.
Well, if it rains out that day, you have the same time for the following day.
Well, who's gonna monitor that?
I am too.
I mean, you know, the police are the only ones out there to monitor it, and we'll tell you right now, we got a heavy caseload right now. I see these reports on a daily basis.
I might, I might do it if, if, if I was just looking, seeing what ride is, you know, going to block this, you know? It's a little quick, you know? You wouldn't want somebody throwing dust all down at your house where you're doing that.
Well, when I was a kid, eight years old, I used to ride around my house. One day I rode over twenty miles around it and nobody ever said one word on a Honda set and a Honda guilty and a Honda one twenty-five. I'm willing to not ride. You know, since the first of the year, we probably haven't been up there eight hours told. If you told the actual running time of those motors up, it wouldn't told eight hours. Anybody that says different, I would like to prove it.
Well, I guess probably the Labor Day, they'll walk, walk it off, you know?
Well, you know, we, we had a blizzard in ninety-three, the snow's gone, the dust is gone, so move on.
All right, so we have a, a potential path forward in that we're gonna have something to, to look at, council will have something to look at.
Yes, sir.
Council will have something to look at next time. It's, it's... We'll see. That's right. All right, so we will move on to items of new business. Resolution twenty-six forty-seven.
Or the quick transition part. A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving bids for the installation of metal roofing on nine city structures.
We received four bids. The little bid was from All Trade Construction, the amount of twenty thousand four hundred dollars. And we did some checking of the references, it came back very positive. They have a good rating with Better Business Bureau, so we recommend that we award a bid to All Trade Construction, a little bid, twenty thousand four hundred dollars. Do you know my name?
Aysen.
Aysen.
That's, that's what you have, not a company. That's a subsidy of another, another company. I tried to find the name, I couldn't actually find this, but I found where they were part of another company going under this name.
Krista. They're in Business Bureau, they've been in business since ten years of business?
Phone number eight eight three seven six nine three.
No, their, their business information... I have four two three three six two eight four six eight.
Three six two eight four six eight.
Yes, sir.
See that's phone number that I got, how much is that on there? Now, another little high one.
There's one in Pennsylvania, one in the same area.
So, figure it out, we're gonna have to close our look.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, would I be...
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Item B, resolution two six four eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving bids for a street skate project along Camp Jordan Parkway.
Okay, we received three bids. Base bid, lowest one was your reconcrete construction for seven hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. High bid was from Adams Contracting, eight hundred ninety thousand five hundred. There were two ordinance to this. Ordinate one included the wood fence in front of a potential pond in the swamp area and hedge road, balance of the roadway, roadway. And order two included the wood fence on both sides of the roadway. Mr. Price is, Mike Price from Map Engineering is here tonight. Thanks for coming, Mike, appreciate it. He recommends a yearly concrete award contract for this project. My recommendation is the same to the council, I concur with that. However, I'm endorsing the base bid, seven hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. That includes the trees on both sides, sidewalks on both sides, and the streetlights on both sides and the parkway, and that's it.
No irrigation?
Irrigation's in here. Yes, I'm sorry, irrigation's in here. That kind of goes with the plan. But as far as the alternatives, I'm not recommending it, we proceed with either of those.
Small detail. Do we have any idea what the, the streetlights will look like?
Yes.
Okay, we do?
They're gonna be, I, I saw a picture of mine, you might want to address that. I know they're, they're gonna be different than the ones we have over at the park. Those are more personal, these are gonna be...
Correct, these will be a, Mike Price, Map Engineers, these will be EPB standards or an acorn type light, which before we actually will approve that, they will submit drawings to us, we'll verify that those meet the linens, the different specifications for vultures and that sort of thing, we'll send those in, of course, to the city manager prior to issuing approval to the contractor of those.
Thank you. This price right here, has it got a minimum or a max on the light, on the elimination?
It does, yes, sir.
All right, so if it can be that we need more than that price, it's gonna go up?
No, we believe that they'll be able to meet the requirements based upon what was spec'd out, and that's what we expect to come back. It's a standard line that EPB uses on some of their other projects, so we don't anticipate having any issues as it relates to meeting those specifications.
Question. If I were, if I remember, were we going to look at a rebuild on this with the concrete not going down both sides?
No. We talked about that at the last meeting, and we also talked about the possibility of not doing it for the swamp area. However, I spent last Sunday walking that whole area and taking a look at it, and I feel that it would be best with sidewalks on both sides. The Wood Brothers, or, or, I forget one LLC is filling in the swamp areas about five hundred feet. I measured that off, that they've got to fill in, they're doing that now, so that that east area will be able to accommodate the width to have the sidewalk, the trees, streetlights put in. But I believe you'll have a uniform boulevard, which will look real nice. You know, if we took that five hundred feet out and decided to do it later, you're never gonna get trees to be able to match, you're not gonna have that, that uniformity going down.
Okay, good. I just did, we discussed the possibility of that, including the...
Yeah, I would not do it.
Instead of concrete on both sides, so...
Right, well, no, I think the sidewalks on both sides, the fence, not putting any fence in, the fence that would be required under a coast to go around the potential pond would be for exit one.
And I drove by this afternoon just to refresh my memory, you know? And I did notice that there was a pretty significant chunk of land there beyond where, I guess, the gap would have appeared at the sidewalk.
Yes.
North of that area, toward the, the bridge going over the creek. So, I'm glad to hear that, that we can do it all the way because it would have looked really strange with...
It would have.
With a gap there and considerable stretch of sidewalk on either side of that very big gap. That's, that's good.
No, the, that area, as I said, an exit one will, will bring the fill up so we have enough room to do that five hundred feet on each side.
All right, well, do we have a motion in regard to this? Resolution two six four eight.
I'd like a motion to begin with, a little bit, urban concrete construction, base bid, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred, seven thousand five...
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. We have a second, any comments or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Slough.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Item C is the grant consent agenda. That's resolution two six four nine, resolution two six five zero, and resolution two six five one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee approving the application for an acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand seventeen federal emergency management FEMA fire prevention and safety grant. Resolution two six five zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the city manager who is designated to apply for and accept the Leary Firefighters Foundation Nest Labs, Inc. for the East Ridge Fire Department. Resolution number two six five one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the application for an acceptance of the MADDIE's Fund Innovation Grant Program.
Our match can be done in labor?
Yes. Is that...
Which range?
Beginning of our location.
We're looking at, we're looking at a corner of five hundred smoke detectors, and we'll put them in.
Yes, and then also I close two hundred and fifty CO2. I believe we can use man-hours to apply for our match, so that shouldn't be a problem. They call that force of power.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Did we, did we get a motion? I didn't think so. We can get a motion approved. We have a motion and a second to approve. We can have the roll call.
Councilmember Slough.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, of course.
Thank you. Item D, resolution two six five two.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the attached contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the City of East Ridge to provide mobile services at the I-75 exit one interchange from fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen on a reimbursement basis. A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the attached contract with the state of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the City of East Ridge to provide mobile services at the I-75 Exit One interchange from fiscal year 2017 to 2018 on a reimbursement basis.
The appropriation that has been provided by, provided by TOD is $8,820. It's the same amount that we received last year. Costs for at least six cuttings, but if we have, keep up the rain that we've been having lately, we'll be doing more than six cuttings. I don't believe that TODs couldn't be able to hand out more money than $8,820.
Might want to get ready to do all this reconstruction down there on the olives, want to go on, might go do a little bit of some of that.
Not necessarily, you might have the, the southbound, going southbound the exit ramp, right where you've got the. Oh, Mr. Lookin's property there, yes, that could be, we, I've seen some conceptuals for the 2475 widening project, and it could be widened. Twenty plus stop one, almost all the way down to our exit.
What flower, bridges too?
They're doing a lot of widening, yes, there's gonna be some, definitely flyovers, so we can see some height involved in that. Right now, they're doing, they're looking at a design bill at a cost of approximately $90 million, but I will almost say that, having seen these projects, been around these projects for three, four decades, that probably will swell to 125 before all. Now, with that, with the tax increase going into effect, a four cents on gasoline and diesel effective July 1st. The state now has dollars to do that project, and it's one of the top three in this area to get done, so we're gonna see something happen in the next year or so, positive on that budget.
Will be a waste of budget, will make you cut off more through East Ridge, will?
Yes.
It could be bad for traffic, but great for businesses on Rico Bridge, yeah.
That's true.
Force of traffic, yes. Okay, do we have a motion in regards to Resolution 2652?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any? Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
If we, if you give the cost, it's about $4,000, $5,000 to cut it down here every year, we only get $8,000. They're gonna make all the changes down the force, like a house might be.
Roll call please.
Councilor Sill.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Item is approved. Item E, mayor's appointees to the housing redevelopment authority. I have. I believe I have four of the five, but I'm still working on the last one, and so I'd like to present them all as a, as a group if I can, so. I will have that to you next time, and I will be here next time, but, but that, but that, well, and, and I could, I could just send those, I guess I could just send those to you all and it'd go through. I mean, I would, I would sue.
Approve it anyway, you're the one who wants it.
Yeah, I don't think so, I think it's just more or less a matter of announcing to the public. Okay.
I have a few questions, since I didn't get a chance to read this thing when we first got it, I'd like to take time now to ask these questions, if I could get permission to do that.
Okay.
All right. We were to decide whether or not we had unsanitary and unsafe living conditions. It still says we do, so I'd like to ask where those conditions are.
Where are what?
Whether we, it says whether unsanitary or unsafe conditions, okay? And we have to have both of those to say that we need to form a housing court, okay? And then the second one is whether there is a lack of safe or sanitary dwelling accommodations for all of our inhabitants in East Ridge. So we have a lack of places for people to live that are not unsafe or sanitary?
Well, I know there's a pretty significant grouping of homeless people that live a stone's throw from where.
That's cause of all the things.
No, that's not necessarily true, I mean.
But, but, but my question is, do we not have enough of the safe and sanitary places for them, people to live if they chose to live in?
Well, I guess you could ask that question about Superior Creek Lodge in September 2015.
We found that it wasn't unsafe, I mean.
Right, but there were 800 people living here who, I mean, if you asked them, wasn't there another place? I think there were probably numerous news accounts of people saying, this is the only place that'll take me. This is the only place that I can afford, it's the only place where I can have, you know, all six of my kids living in a wood room, a boat, basically.
They, they didn't want fish rigs, whether they could afford somewhere else or whether I would, whether I would rent my room because they have no credit, or they don't have a background check, or I would rent my place. But that comes with this rig. And it also says, this condition, age building, the degree of overcrowding, percentage of land covered, the big buildings are taken on, light and air availability, have such dwelling accommodations, sanitary facilities. I'd like to know where the, where we say that unsafe and unsanitary places are. Because I've never had East Ridge.
And you don't, you didn't see wood place, that you thought was unsafe or unsanitary in all of East Ridge.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get out and walk in, now we're talking about, and I don't like to name the place.
Well, that's what you're asking me to do, is to name the place, so why don't you name the place? You, you said.
The local appearance mentioned, I didn't see it to where it was unsanitary, they have make service.
I think there's been two murders there.
That don't make it unsanitary.
That makes it unsafe.
That don't make it unsafe, that don't make it unsanitary. And, and we have, I'm sorry.
Requirements is that whether unsanitary or unsafe and have.
I didn't say it had to be both.
Then the next one, then the next one says whether there is a lack of safe or sanitary dwellings for our occupants in East Ridge. Now, we don't have enough of places out here for these people to move out, these places are just saying unsanitary and unsafe to move into?
It, it is ultimately council's decision, are we, do we believe as a council that there is a lack, that there is not enough safe and sanitary places for everyone, all inhabitants, to live here?
My question, I'm waiting.
Exactly, and I believe council answered that question.
Now you're saying that we do not have enough residents out here, have enough apartments for these people to live in that are not safe or not sanitary, for these people to live in, keep them from living in the unsafe and unsanitary.
Where did the 800 people go that left Superior Creek? Did they all stay in East Ridge?
I have no idea.
Exactly. There were, there are people.
We voted off again and have another apartment, but I agree with what we've done down there.
So, I mean, basically, you don't, you don't.
But I'm not wanting to argue, I'm just asking whether these questions.
Let's, let's, let's head right to the chase.
Okay, let it do it.
There's, you don't, you don't like the fact that council decided.
No, sir, that isn't what I said, I asked you.
I think it is.
Okay, well, then you're taking it personal, not me, I'm asking for it. I'd like, I'm asking another question.
Sure.
Okay, since we have no line item budget for the housing community, the housing, now, now, that, the city is not responsible for the housing court community?
Typically, yes, right.
Typically, yes, so we are not responsible for their budgets, their money they spend. Remember, is that right?
As I understand it, yes.
Okay, the question was asked at night, then, if Mr. Mark was going here, had been kind of their counsel, and he said he would be more than willing, but are we gonna pay him, or is the better housing community gonna pay him?
Well, let me ask this question, how, how does the industrial development board pay Mark Manutov?
We're not discussing that.
No, I, no, it's, it's the exact same thing, it is the exact same thing. It is.
Now, I've got another one on the run now. It says. This housing community is going to be allowed to function within 10 miles, outside 10 miles of our boundaries, is that correct? We have reference.
If, if that's, the way that was adopted was the city, we sure did not adopt any area outside of the city. Now, the statute reads that you could go within 10 miles outside, but this city did not elect to make that choice when they adopted the redevelopment.
So the city of Chattanooga's better housing community can come into East Ridge?
No. No, because the statute.
So we can go in 10 miles outside if we adopt it?
Well, there are some restrictions.
Our boundaries, but they can come in here if they adopt it.
They're not allowed to adopt until the municipality.
And so they're just, we're not allowed to adopt it to their.
That's right.
Well, that's the question I had, I had to ask, like y'all, Ruth Hatch.
Sir. Item F, discuss and take action, and or take action on school appropriations. I did speak with Phil Henry, the principal at Spring Creek Elementary. I said, I asked him. Made the observation, I'm sure he had a lot of needs, would, are there any particular areas that would be particularly helpful? He did, he did say that, you know, providing the funds to, to purchase new instruments for the orchestra would be, would be much appreciated, they have a, a school orchestra there. And ultimately, if we, if it comes right down to it, we can just make the expenditure, make the appropriation to the school, and let them use it for the need that they see fit. If, you know, if it comes right down to it. And again, the proposal is to give $500 to each school, each of the public schools, so the developmental, middle school and the high school, if they can. Again, use.
Music teacher down there told me first year that they got a pretty sizable grant to start the history program down there, so.
And they, she also said she had a, had spoken with, when we had a painting day at Spring Creek back in March, and she said that they'd gotten exceptionally good deal from some instrument supplier, I don't know who that was, but they used the grant to buy a lot of instruments, but obviously they're cycling through instruments fairly, fairly quickly, I'd say. But anyway, the, the proposal is that the $2,000 has been used for various art programs in the past. If we give each school 500, then they can use those as, as they see fit. So we have a. Do you have any comments or questions on that? I don't do this often, but I will move to make that appropriation to each of the four schools. I don't, I don't.
Did the motion, did you have that lead?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I made a motion that we give $500 to each school, be used as a, deemed to be.
Will you make that second? So I, that was, yeah, I was, that's him being due, I'm sorry, I was, yeah, I was, I don't do it very often, but, yeah, I'll say you would make that second, thank you. All right, do we have any comments or questions? Roll call please.
Councilor Sill.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes.
Item G, change order for fire station number two.
Okay, we've got five, six change orders, two of them are credits, so we really don't have to talk much on those. The first one is CP2, which is additional gas piping for the emergency generator. That one totally from the inside gas line to outside on the southeast corner of the building to be connected to the generator. That work had to be completed when it was done, so I went ahead and authorized that, so we didn't hold up. Second one was the CP3, removal of unforeseen undesirable soil, backfill suitable soil. That was a total of $10,022. That one was authorized by myself because the work had to be done, and we weren't able to get the flooring cord for the fire, fire station. The CP4 was the exterior paving reinforcement, now, in amount of $2,385, this is out towards the street, about five feet off the street to come in. And as for adding more reinforcement to that, due to the, the weight of those trucks. Six was the credit, eight was the credit, and number seven, CP7, was powder coat sectional doors, three overhead sectional doors, now $3,893. This one's pending approval, you do have an email here from Mike Williams, the chief, fire chief, requesting that we approve this. This was the picture that everybody looked at, unfortunately, when we were looking at the bid specifications, there was a conflict between the two. The bid specs called for, Mike, you're gonna have to help me on this, so come on up.
As correct as we know, it's saying the specs called for ionized coating on the doors, bay doors, to kind of match the rest of the, what they call storefront. However, on the plans, the photos that we were given, and the color that we agreed upon, between myself and the architect, doors would be red. If they were to be red, then that would have to be powder coated to get that color to stay on the doors, just do the painting, that way you'll get the larger out of that.
So the bid documents, which was the inch and a half, two inch, all the, the specifications for everything, were taken to that, called for the ionic?
That's correct, isn't it?
Coating, and then the drawings.
The drawings, it says called for a powder coated door.
Called for the powder coated, so when you have a conflict, I'm told, was told by our architect, when you have a conflict, that the bid specification documents takes precedent over the drawings. Now, I'm not an architect, that's.
Does the architect do the bid, like the bid drawings?
Yes, the architect does the bid, specifications, and the drawings, he certifies it all, that's what we pay him. I think the initial contracts, several tens of thousands, now we. I think the initial contracts, several tens of thousands, now we paid upon this project about fifty-six thousand for the drawings, specs, the bidding, and also the inspection services. Yeah. To answer your question, yes, the architect does specs and the drawings, and there was a conflict. Now, the first building I ever built was the City Hall in nineteen seventy-seven, and I've never heard of that before, where you have bid documents take precedent over the drawings.
And we have some other issues?
We had one on the first one, get additional gas line, one thousand nine hundred twelve. That one was left out of the plans, and it should have been in there. That one, and this one, all the other one. Now, we've had some other change orders come before us, and I said at the very beginning, when I met with the contractor and the architect, this is a new building, and the only time on a new building, when you construct it from the ground up, is gonna have to do with soil. As far as everything else, building, it should all be included. If you leave out a light switch, if you leave out something on that line, that's your fault.
That's what I'm saying, should it be the architect that pays this instead of the city?
To be honest with you, that's a decision that this council's gonna have to make. If you wanna go after the architect for the amount of one thousand nine hundred and twelve for the gas piping, and for the powder coated sectional doors, three thousand eight hundred ninety-three, because there was a discrepancy, and there was an omission on the gas piping, you certainly have authority to do that. However, it's been over my past experience, and some councils have done it, and other councils have not. So that's, that's your decision.
Now, this letter here to you, it said that the specifications were clear anodized aluminum for door finish matching the fourth storefront. Drawings call out powder coated door, presumably red, specs room, and so forth. When it occurs, okay, then down here about the third or fourth paragraph, I'm assuming that Mr. Williams wrote it in here. In my opinion, we were given the drawings and photos of the new fire station. The photo shows the doors to be red and coated. Did we agree? Now, who has we agreed?
Me and Mr. Sales when we started this.
Okay, we provided the original photo showing the doors to be red and trimmed. Now, please, is you or the city?
As the council was also shown the same photo, Mr. Sales presented that to the council. Here at the council, and the photo I showed the doors to be red.
Do you have one with Mike? Do you have a bit?
I do.
I know every pitch I ever seen, the doors were red.
All red?
The doors were red, yes, sir. Mike, show me a big picture when we set the new fire engine that day. And that picture, it was red.
Right, now, where we got, we have a, you had that email, I'll turn it over to my office.
Well, let me ask you this, can we, is it gonna hold up anything if we have attorney look at the contract?
I also have a copy of the memo from Mr. Sales, it says in his email, it says, "There was a conflict on our drawings for the doors that was not pointed out during the bid period. The specifications call for clear anodized aluminum for the door finish matching the storefront. The drawings call out a powder coated door, presumably red, specifications ruling when this occurs." I don't think this is a compromise to use the clear anodized doors. Let's see if it's emailed. I'll read my response later today.
This was dated May the second, correct?
Sorry?
This was dated May the second, what you just read?
An email from?
May the first. I wrote that on that paper, I simply remember the second.
All right, well, that's, that's just a different, what you read, over here.
Okay. According to this, it is, according to this, it's May the first.
Now, this will take you seven. But let me elaborate a little bit more. I've got another thing here sent from Don Sales, sent to us by May the second, two thousand seventeen, nine nineteen AM, to Mr. Miller. Down here about the last paragraph, just before he says, "Thank you," assuming all of these are accepted, the total change order amount to be added to this contract comes to twelve thousand eight hundred and third payment days, and four additional days. There is no doors mentioned in this.
No, he left it out.
Okay. The thing, that's another.
No, hold, hold, hold off, hold off. You're reading from the memo, the email communication, okay? And what I'm looking at is the change order, which is in your packet. I called him and I said, "Now you're leaving out the powder coat doors, that's add, are you adding, is that included in the thirteen thousand, or is it added to thirteen thousand?" The way I added it all together, it's sixteen thousand seven hundred and four dollars. That's what he put in the change order. That's what is before you tonight, sixteen thousand seven oh four, which includes everything that's in my email to you.
But in this change order, the doors are not in?
That's, that's not, what you're handing me is not a change order. That's the change order.
Oh, it's the last part, maybe.
I understand. But I'm, what I'm telling you, that this is, this is, this is an email communication. This is not a document that carries any weight. This is the document that has to be completed, that's in your agenda, which is the change order. This is the official change order for sixteen thousand seven oh four.
You're saying this would be?
Yes, sir, that's the one that has to be executed by the council.
I'd like to let the attorney look at the contract we had with them, and look at all the documents, and let him tell us what, how many, it's not going to hold, but still I'll look at them.
Well, the only, I, I can say that the, that the, it's mentioned in my email to you, additional gas piping for nineteen sixteen, nineteen twelve, council, so that was already approved. I had to approve that one. I didn't, I'm not gonna hold up. Okay, now, for the doors, that is, that's pending approval. That, sooner or later, we're gonna have to make a final decision on that. It probably could wait two weeks.
I was telling you, three weeks, they might have power, I was like, just play airplane being closed in.
In three weeks. Okay, so what I'm saying is, you've got until the twenty-sixth, that's two weeks from tonight. You've got two weeks to make that decision. What you don't wanna do, and I'm gonna tell you right now, you don't hold up this contract, because if you're gonna give more days to that, that contractor, you may be looking for more money. And I've already been to court on this once in nineteen eighty-seven, and we got whacked with a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, because the architect did not stay on top of the change orders.
We've up to accept this?
You can accept this and go after the architect later, that's up to the council.
I've got another picture I wanna say.
Okay.
It's six revise, this is for, this is a credit.
Yes.
Okay. Second line, after keypad entry locks that door, one oh four, one oh seven, and one twenty-two. That's three doors, correct?
Yes.
Okay, quantity out here says two. We didn't tell us six ninety-nine, twenty. So are we getting three keypads, or are we getting two?
We're not getting any keypads, are we?
Yes, sir.
Not any key?
From what I understand, there's two keypads going on, the two keypads were in the view, that were in the specs. There was maybe some things that it was cut out, but Mr. Sales felt like he had another, he, he had a label, another third one. That's the reason he was asking for a third one placed.
Okay, because I know he, he proposed an additional change order for additional keypads, and that's when I contacted you from the outside to the inside of the building, and you said, "Scott, I don't need keypads, we're using keys now, we'll use keys then." I said, "Well, future?"
Particularly, we could, at least two, one outside kitchen area, 'cause the guy stepped outside kitchen area, stepped off the back there, and didn't have a key to re, they would have a push code in.
The reason I brought that up, how did this be three years ago, and we showed two keypads? There was money there.
Right.
So we are just getting two keypads?
Yes, you wanted to get a lot of knowledge, you wanted to get more, and we said no, as I remember, we denied that.
That's correct. Also, Mr. Cagle, on the, on the memorandum that I sent Mr. Miller, you referenced that it was the second, I believe. I did, I did send that to Mr. Miller on the second, but I also received an email on the
What's the difference in price on the doors? Did they pay it or not?
Thirty-eight something, I lose. Thirty-eight ninety-three, just under four grand.
They told us more than that to go after, I guess, attorney would.
Well, let me, let me put it this way, yeah, I, you're gonna have to look at that at the end of the project as to whether or not, you know, the change orders, that should not occur are substance to go after. I've gone out, we, I've been successful, one is usually over twenty-five, the largest one I went after was two hundred and forty thousand pounds. And we got it, but, I'm, you know, right now, you're looking at nineteen twelve, thirty-eight ninety-three. We're doing our best to keep these from occurring, but, as I've always said, a new building
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I might love you first, Attorney Gordon, I think we need to look, next time we're looking at architect, I think I'll look this way.
We have a motion, we have a second.
You probably have one more point. I looked at, we found it here.
I'll, I'll second, take a discussion.
Okay, the change order in here, but it's created, but I just can't see as to where painted floor cost more than putting vinyl floor down. We already had a vinyl, we had another coming back, protect the vinyl, paint it. And it went from eighteen hundred to nineteen seventy-five to panel.
What was the word, the name of the file?
Um, not so, yeah. It's hard to leave, it costs more to paint it for, than to put a vinyl, vinyl for that. Just wanna bring it up.
I hear you.
Do I have any other, other questions?
Yes, I know there's been a motion in the second, I hate to call Chief Bruce back up, but the question here is, changing from a clear, anodized finish to a powder coated, what's the difference in lifespan? If we went with as is, with clear anodized finish, versus going powder coated, I see it could last longer, you're talking decades, you're talking more.
I want your question.
It states here, the change order, longevity of powder coating versus what, extended years of clear anodized finish?
I don't know, I don't know if, if I can provide that to you accurate. What I will tell you is that all the appliances, the power source that we use, or lives, anything that has water going through, that's pressure going through, it's all powder coated. They heat that item up, and then they spray a powder coating on it, and we, we have to have to do that, pure, raw, any one, our stuff. I feel like it would be a good, good gesture for our building. It gives it that color, that was one of the things that we had asked for with Mr. Sales, the doors to be red. Since they're full glass doors, the only red on that would be, our option would be, you know, the trim. So that was, that was our biggest reason for it.
We're always gonna say, with the red powder coated doors, you're gonna have a lot better appearance on that fire station, it's gonna be there for decades. I'm not talking several decades, fire department like that, conceivably will last seventy, eighty years or plus.
Do we have any other questions, comments? Do you have a motion in a second? To approve the change order? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Leibler.
Yes. Item H, which is actually our, our last item. We don't need the executive session, we have the executive session already, correct? So, item H is our last item on the agenda tonight. It is a presentation of fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen annual budget.
Mayor, just for a finding, who says so?
Gladly.